I'll call the meeting to order in 10 seconds. I'd like to call the meeting of District 721 School Board to order. Uh, and we'll begin with roll call. Mark?
Here.
Leo? You're muted Leo.
Here.
Matt?
Here.
Dennis?
Here.
Him?
Here.
Tammy?
Here.
Jean, here. Please note all board members are present. Um, and we have no open forum, um, items tonight. Uh, so can I get a motion to approve the agenda for tonight?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, now we do the roll call again. Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Hi.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Hi.
Him?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes. Um. Motion carried, seven zero. And now can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor. Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Hi.
Him?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jean, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Okay, now we will have, uh, committee reports. Policy?
We did have a bunch of policies to re- that we reviewed virtually by ourselves. Um. Nothing major wellness made a bunch of adjustments for their team and otherwise we matched MSBA policies and just a few minor changes for administration.
Thank you. Uh, Southwest Metro Intermediate District?
We will have our monthly meeting tomorrow evening.
Okay. How about CPAC?
CPAC met last Thursday and we had a nice presentation by social workers that attended uh, a workshop on coping strategies. Uh, with COVID being such a big player in people's mental health, uh, the social workers attended this, uh, workshop and, uh, talked about the different type of coping strategies that were brought up at the meeting. So that was very informative. And then, uh, we also, uh, talked about several other issues, uh, dealing with students and, uh, the, uh, virtual learning that's taking place. But, uh, it is what it is and the students are doing as well as they can. Thank you.
Community Ed?
No, we did not meet.
Wellness?
And Wellness did not either.
The early childhood also did not meet. How about the Joint Powers Fitness and Aquatic Center?
We did not meet.
Okay, um, superintendent report.
Okay, I'm gonna go over, uh, sort of our return to school plan. And after I go through this, I'll be open, uh, obviously, encourage, uh, any comments or questions, be able to answer those uh, as we go here and I'll talk about a timeline here too as we go through this. But, uh, I'm gonna take you through a decision-making model that I use with our administrative team a lot. And that includes, um, you know, what our vision, what, what we want, which is our vision. Um, what we know, some of the, you know, the facts and knowledge of the situation, what we believe. And then finally, what we will do, sort of what, uh, my recommendation for an action plan is in regards to return to school. So first off, uh, the first grade, what do we want? Um, we, you know, we want to engage and support all students in high levels of learning. Uh, doesn't matter what learning model we're in, whether it's distance, in-person, hybrid, uh, but to engage, support all students and whether we're in a pandemic or not. And we always keep that, you know, first in our thoughts and deeds. And what do we believe? Uh, there's two things and we've said this from the beginning of, uh, well, since last summer and we keep saying over and over again, our highest priority is to provide a safe learning environment uh, for all students, all staff. And then the second thing is that, uh, we believe that in-person teaching and learning is better for students. And, uh, we realized, you know, as we're going through the pandemic, uh, due to the, some of the guidelines and threshold numbers, uh, we're not able to do that as much as we'd like right now. The, the next part here, I'm gonna go over what do we know? What do we know? What are some of the facts and of the situation as we go through this? First of all, uh, I've been collaborating with the neighboring school districts. We've been, uh, a lot of emails exchanged, phone calls and seeing what everyone's process is, timeline is, uh, factors that they take into consideration before making a decision. So there's been some good collaboration there. Uh, again, we have weekly meetings, which all three of our counties, uh, to take a look at the data. Uh, they also update us on the latest, uh, things going on through, uh, Minnesota Department of Health. So they're sort of lay us on between us and the State Department and they've been very helpful. And we also receive guidance from the regional support team, which I'll be meeting with, uh, this Thursday. We met once before, uh, before we made the decision to go distance learning, but they sort of provide, I would just say the, the support, but they, uh, you know, give us guidance or make recommendations um, as we finalize things. So before, uh, you know, you're gonna hear me talk about this, uh, making a final decision by Friday here, I have to go through the regional support team. I know there's a couple of people that have, uh, contacted me by phone call and email. We, I, I don't have just a magic wand that we could just do whatever we want. Uh, there are some state guidelines and parameters that have been put, put forth and, uh, we have to work through that. So, um, I think, you know, it's an important thing to, for us all to remember. So just a process and what, what do we know? This is, uh, what we, uh, the people that we collaborate with and work with as we make decisions.
Tim?
Yes.
Uh, uh, the governor is going to make some, uh, uh, comments and do some a discussion about, uh, regulation that either will be put in or taken out or whatever have you. Do you foresee that influencing any of your decisions?
Um, yes, it, yes, it could. I didn't put him, you know, I didn't put the governor in this slide, but, um, you know, that would come through the regional support team anyway and the county health officials in a way. Um, which, you know, we, like I said, we meet with the regional support team and the county health officials later this week. So we'll file more there, but, um, you know, his, his thing, I mean, he'll talk about school district, sure. I know the, uh, with, uh, the Minnesota State High School with athletics and activities, uh, that will be, uh, decided on, on Wednesday when he, when he speaks. So yeah, in a way, yes, it, it definitely could.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, some other things that we know. First of all, the data, uh, indicates the number of cases are trending downward. And I'm talking about, when I talk about that, I'm talking about, uh, our three counties. I'm talking about our cities. I'm talking about our school district. What we're seeing right now, the last, uh, couple of weeks, when they take that two-week data, the number of cases per 10,000 people has been going down. We reached a high point, uh, the second week. Um, taken from the second week in November, which we get it two weeks later. So at the end of November, uh, we're all, while we were over 200 in Scott County per 10,000, uh, and 180, 190 in the other two counties. And keep in mind, sort of the threshold uh, for distance learning, uh, for elementary and secondary, or, or I should say elementary is 50. So it was quite high, but it has been coming down. Uh, they're projecting all three counties to be just over 100. Uh, this Friday, we find that out. Um, and keep in mind, that's a two-week legs still. That's, that's from two weeks ago. And, uh, just talking to the county officials, I think it's gonna continue to go downward. Um. Another thing, what we know, we, we, we do have 300 kids attending Kids Company, our daycare daily, almost 300. Those are almost, 98% of them are, uh, tier one workers' kids. And, uh, so if you, if you've been in our elementary, you visit our elementary at Eagleview, uh, we've got a hundred-some kids and, and just under 200 at Rame Stream. Uh, they're all over the buildings, our, our paraprofessionals. Uh, we've got custodians, we've got, uh, food service workers, uh, other paraprofessionals working with these kids in, in, uh, pods of 15 or less throughout the building. So they're on the computers and our teachers are doing a fantastic job at all levels, but, uh, for these kids mainly in the elementary, uh, working with them. So, uh, that's going on. And then, uh, we also have other students, uh, give you example in the secondary, uh, kids with special needs, kids that need intervention, uh, kids that are in vocational classes that they can't do, it's, it's the type of class that they need to come in, have been coming in, in person. So we do have students in the building. It's not like it, you know, was last spring when it was, you know, a strict stay-at-home order. We do have kids there and I know, talking to the teachers, uh, they've really enjoyed, uh, having these kids in. And, and our, uh, our principals too have been going out for kids that have been struggling or not responding, uh, making, I mean, they've been making a lot of home visits, especially at the secondary level. Another thing we know, our grades K5 are the least infections aid group. And I, I should mention this too, and you guys have, uh, heard about this or read this or seen it on TV. Uh, Dr. Anthony Fauci has said over and over again, uh, safest place for kids are in the schools. Uh, right now with the elementary, our average class size in the hybrid model is, uh, just over 10 students. And if we did transition with just K5 coming back first, um, especially after the holiday break, holiday break, we'd have additional, um, coverage, uh, because we would not have middle school and high school in session. I'm gonna have, uh, Jen Schenker, our Director of Health Services, to talk about this, but you might have read that the CDC, uh, uh, changed their quarantine guidance and Minnesota Department of Health has followed up with that. It was 14 days, um, and I'm gonna let Jen explain it, but, um, what we're gonna be doing here, but this sort of ties into about our transition back, uh, to a hybrid learning model. Jen, you just wanna take it and explain that real quick?
Sure. So the CDC and Department of Health have changed their quarantine guidelines following an exposure that does not involve someone in your household. So in a classroom, in the community, in your social life, if you're exposed, they've now given options to decrease the quarantine time from 14 days to either 10 or 7, if you meet certain criteria. We, as a district, have talked about and elected to go with the 10-day option if all criteria are met, but not the 7-day option. So, um, allowing people to have the potential to decrease their quarantine time, but yet err on the side of safety and go with the option that has a lower transmission risk.
And there are school districts that are staying with the 14-day, uh, but I feel confident in, uh, you know, the system we have set up here, um, especially in our hybrid model and the communication that's taken place uh, with our nurses and, 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 uh, under Jen's leadership, uh, there's been great communication, uh, between them, with, uh, parents and students. And I think we have a pretty good handle on things and we can have a very safe environment and that way we can obviously, uh, keep our people in school, uh, a lot better. Um, yeah, so that's that. And the second thing here is, uh, meeting with the health officials too. Uh, I really don't know of anyone around here, uh, that is gonna come back on January 4th. They're strongly recommending an incubation period, uh, immediately following the holiday break, just because of the contact with everyone else. And, uh, so that will ties into, uh, on what we will do also. I'll explain that in a second here. And when we make a decision, um, the communication that will come out, uh, will go to staff and then to families. Uh, it'll be this Friday, uh, December 18th. And for that, again, like, what, uh, Denny was asking about with the governor on Wednesday, um, we've got, uh, the regional support team meeting on Thursday. Uh, I can't really make a decision, uh, until I, you know, meet with that regional support team and sort of get their blessing on moving forward. Uh, but that's what I'm gonna go over right now, what we will do if, if all goes away, I think it will, but it could change. Uh, we wanna transition to an in-person hybrid learning model for grades K5 on Monday, January 11th. And the transition for secondary grades, both the high school and middle school, grades six to 12, would be on Wednesday, January 20th. Now, keep in mind, Monday, January 18th is Martin Luther King Day. We don't have uh, kids in school that day and Tuesday was our planning day. Uh, one of the things we still need to get worked out this week, if we do go this route, um, most likely our, our teacher planning day would have to change for the elementary teachers and move from the 19th, uh, I'll just give you an example. It doesn't mean it's gonna go there, but it could go to Friday, January 8th. So we'll do four days of distance from 11th to the 14th, uh, I'm sorry, from the 4th until the 7th and, uh, do a teacher planning on the 8th, uh, before they start on the 11th with in-person hybrid learning. And then, uh, that would mean they would have school on Tuesday, January 19th and the secondary teachers would have a planning time if we did do this. Talking to the county health officials again, like I said, they want an incubation period, uh, you know, from the Christmas, uh, New Year's, you know, dates, because there'll be a lot of people getting together, they think. And, uh, they really strongly, uh, are recommending that. Uh, some schools are not starting, uh, all their grades till the 20th. There are a couple districts, I don't wanna mention any names right now. They're having board meetings right now too, that are doing what we're doing. Uh, but some of them are starting later. Uh, for us, Wednesday, January 20th, especially, it's ideal for our high school, because that is the start of second semester. So if we go this route, our teachers will know, especially at the high school level, uh, what to do with their finals for, with being in the distance learning model. And, uh, we'll be able to have that day of planning on January 19th and start in the 20th. Uh, a lot of districts are starting, like I said, on that one for all grades. There are districts that are starting, uh, a week or two later than that also. So it all depends on the district. And as we take a look at things, I do need to say this. Things could change. Uh, we wanna send out that communication, but within that communication this Friday is if we get a, you know, the virus goes out of control again and we get up to 200 cases within a two-week period per 10,000 people, you know, we're gonna have to change our plans. So this is not written in stone. It could change even by Friday. Uh, like I said, I gotta get the blessing of the regional support team and, uh, as we move forward on this, but I think, uh, this is our best-case scenario. Uh, going back to what, you know, what we want, what we believe and what we know, uh, I think this makes the most sense and is best for our kids and, and our staff. And again, I can't say enough good things about how things are going right now. Our teachers have been doing a wonderful job. I talked about uh, what's going on at Kids Company, what's going on with our preschool, which has been going on and they've been doing a great job. Uh, but I will tell you this, there are kids struggling. Uh, when we talk about, uh, we want high levels of learning for all kids, it's just not academically. It's physically, socially, emotionally, uh, the whole thing. So the mental health is a big thing and, uh, there are kids that are struggling, uh, right now with the, with the distance learning format and, and our T, we're doing a great job, but, um, it's not the same. Like I said, one of the beliefs is that in-person learning, uh, you know, is, is, is best for kids. And like I've had several teachers tell me, I mean, they, they didn't go into teaching to be in a distance learning model. Uh, they wanna see, they want the kids in school. So we have to have that balance and do the right thing.
Tam, you're muted.
Did that just go off?
Yeah.
Well, um, so going back, we, we wanna be able to, again, have high levels of learning, but we also want a safe environment too. So we have to have that balance. But I think this, uh, making this transition with, uh, elementary and secondary is best for our kids and, and, uh, hopefully we can, uh, get through the holiday break here and the numbers keep trending downward. I'll open it up for any comments or, uh, questions.
Yeah, the state MDA report today was that the, the statistics per, per those tested is going down statewide as well.
And I would say this too, when we look at the data, the county data is important. I'm not, I'm not saying it isn't, but the, what's most important to us is the cities, you know, New Prague, Alcoa, New Market, Lonsdale, but even more importantly, there are school district data, our area code data, uh, taking a look at that, because it could be high in some areas of the county, but not in New Prague. So we always have to keep that in consideration too.
Do you have anything else to report?
All it is is COVID nowadays, Jean.
Okay. Okay, should we move on to the action items? Um, next is the approval of the revised budget. Do you have, um, do you have a, a report Sandy or?
Um, shoot. I do. I'm just trying to figure out how to present when I've only got one screen. So, um, just trying to.
Sandy, do you want me to present?
Yeah, could you? That would be great. Thank you. I'm not sure what's going on.
Yeah, it'll take me just a second to pull it up, but I can do that and then you can, um.
So there was a reason I sent it to you today after all.
I'm getting there, sorry. It's
That's okay.
A little bit uncooperative right now.
There we go. Okay, so we have the budget to present. I typically do this in December at the Truth in Taxation meeting. The preliminary budget that we approve in June is just that preliminary and, uh, this actually is kind of preliminary again, um, unfortunately, but so, you know, budgeting during a pandemic is pretty challenging. And so I was, you know, thinking through all the challenges that we have and we have just so many unknowns. We don't know the future learning models, the future federal grants. We might get more federal funding. Um, the state enrollment funding, right now, you know, our enrollment is down a couple of hundred kids. Um, but there's talk in the legislature that they might, um, base it on last year's enrollment. Um, but that would be something they would do, you know, when they meet in January. Uh, we could have new executive orders from the governor. He's up to 99. There could be some more that affect the school district. There's always changing MDE guidance as well as cha- changing Minnesota Department of Health guidance. So everything, I, I was telling Tim earlier, I don't think there's ever been a time in my professional career where that I have had so many unknowns and so many pivots and, um, just very challenging to budget. Next slide. So first, I'm just gonna deal with the general fund and the revenue. Obviously, we have a decreased enrollment and that has impacted our, our, um, revenue by almost $1.4 million. And I said earlier, the default to 1920 enrollment is a possibility, which would really help. It still wouldn't be what we had budgeted for, uh, originally, but it would be, um, a, a big, a big, um, boost to our revenue. We have decreased activities revenue. Um, we have decreased school facility and bus rental revenue. Uh, decreased federal grant. We typically pay for some of our interventionists with some federal funds and we had to move them to the classroom. So there's about $100,000 that we will have to pay out of our general fund. Now that does carry forward to next year and so next year we'll have $200,000 to spend, but that is a, a, a change in our revenue this year. Uh, we also have the Corona, coronavirus relief funds of about $800,000 in the general fund. But that has to be spent only on new expenses. That could not be spent on anything that was in the budget. So while that's, uh, an additional revenue, there's also additional expenses to go with that. And then we also have remaining, um, uh, cares, federal funds that are unbudgeted for now. We have about $130,000 that we received back in, um, April and May, and we did spend some of it last fiscal year, um, but we saved some for this year. You know, we couldn't spend it all last year. And, but we may need the majority of that for emergency childcare. So there's lots of moving parts here that I'm trying to, trying to track. So, um, this just shows the preliminary and final, uh, budget. And I say final budget, it's possible that I will take another budget for approval, maybe in April. You know, kinda see how things go. I, it, there's so many unknowns that I may decide to bring another budget. That's not unusual for school districts to do. Um, but right now it's considered our final budget. Um, with overall revenue on a sign being down, um, $860,000 and general, or $760,000 in total general fund down about $1 million. Um, then I move on to general fund expenses and anything that I put a CRF, those are the cor- coronavirus relief funds and that's only available through 12/30. So this budget includes some expenses that we'll have all year, but I had to stop paying for them with federal funds as of December 30th. Um, so you'll see that, you know, hopefully we'll get some more federal funds to help us with that, but, um, you know, we just have to wait and see. Um, so first of all, we updated for the finals, you know, staff salary and benefits. Because when we do our preliminary budget, we know the positions, but we don't always know the people. So obviously that's something we do every year when we, when we do our revised budget. Um, I had indicated last Ju- May and June that we were gonna decrease, um, some paratime at the elementary, but we did not decrease that due to student supervision needs. And through 12/30, we're using CRF funds for that. Um, but the student supervision needs are, are pretty great. Um, and so we decided to keep that, um, additional .5 FTE at each elementary. Um, last year we did a lunchroom supervision charge back to nutrition services. That's only allowed every three years. So that went away this year. That's gonna be standard practice. So every three years we'll do that. We obviously have increased teacher substitute needs. We hired an additional three reserve subs. We normally have two, one for elementary and one for secondary. And this year we hired one for each building. And again, through 12/30, we're using CRF funds for that. Um, hoping to get more, um, more funds to pay for that. Um, and then we also have classroom supervision for teachers teaching from home. I think Tim has told you before that we have district office staff in classrooms. Um, I've been in a couple of classrooms. Not my favorite thing to do necessarily, but it's certainly a good experience. Um, and so we've got it just a lot of additional substitute costs. Uh, school nursing, we are gonna be fully sta- we are fully staffed this year. Last year we weren't quite fully staffed, which was a strain on, on Jen and her team. Uh, we also did hire briefly a reserve nurse that we use coronavirus relief funds. We also had some, um, summer planning costs uh, that we use CRF funds for. A custodial cost, we obviously have different additional staffing, uh, needs. Um, we did, um, you know, move several custodians to day shift. We hired some student workers for the, um, afternoon and evening shifts. Uh, we were using CRF funds for that. We have additional cleaning supplies. Uh, but now we have temporary, seven temporary furloughs because of moving to distance learning. So it's kind of a, uh, an up and a down kind of a thing. Uh, transportation, we currently have 19 temporary furloughs and we will have decreased fuel and maintenance. Costs, um, some, but we still are running buses. So that didn't go down that much. Um, activities, excuse me, this is a new, um, and, and Tim might wanna speak to this a little bit, but we had a request for an assistant robotics advisor. We have more students in that program um, than we ever have. And so, um, Brad off, uh, requested to have an assistant robotics advisor. So that's for $4,000. And Tim, did you wanna say a few words about that?
Yeah, that's, that's one of our, uh, programs. It's growing and growing and, uh, it, 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 uh, Yeah, that's, that's one of our programs. It's growing and growing. And it, it, it's a really neat program. And the more kids we can get involved in robotics, I mean, it really fits a niche for a lot of these kids to be involved with. I think it's very important. And I think the numbers call for it.
And then, of course, we had some decreased costs for activities like officials, activity workers, supplies, rental fees. So again, our revenue went down in that area, but some of our expenses decreased as well. We had some technology needs for hybrid and distance learning models, some planning time this summer that we've been able to use CRF funds for most of those costs. Our staff development costs are going down just because there's not much available, no conferences. I typically, you know, would go to Masmo conferences, and we haven't had one since last February. So just a decreased availability for those types of activities. Decreased opportunities for field trips and tournament entry fees. I did increase the budget for costs for students served outside a district based on last year's costs. They can fluctuate from year to year depending upon where our students are and where they're being served. We had a substantial amount of PPE and social distancing queues costs. We were able to use CRF funds for all of that. And then we, at the last minute, we actually purchased two mini buses to transport special ed students during distance learning because of the, some of the capacity limits. And we were able to get MDE to approve purchasing two mini buses. And again, we were able to, able to use CRF funds for, for that. So again, our, our expenses for our preliminary and final expenses increasing. Next slide. This is just a picture of our total and unassigned fund balance, just showing our revenue being lower than our expenses. This is our general fund balance history, and just shows the final 1920, which didn't end up being substantially higher than what I was projecting, which is always the case. But we were able to save a little bit of money last year in transportation costs and activities fees and things like that and sub costs. So we were able to increase, you know, not have our, our unassigned and our total general fund balance decrease as much as planned. So that helps us actually, but then shows a significant dip. And I think that the, the message I want to send tonight is that this is hopefully worst case scenario, you know, that, and we're hoping to get some more federal funds. We're hoping to be able to, you know, continue to look to cut costs, which I'll talk about in a few minutes. Next slide. These are our reserved and committed accounts. You see our staff development. We always try to keep that balance nice and low. LTFM, we are decreasing that balance this year due to some projects that we're doing. And medical assistance, we probably will use that reserve to offset some of our special ed costs. So that will just help our unassigned fund balance. But we're going to wait and see kind of how that revenue comes in. And again, there's so many unknowns with this year. Operating capital, we are planning on spending that down some this year. Gifted and talented, we actually, because of distance learning and the hybrid, we don't actually have a full-time gifted and talented teacher this year. So those, that will slightly increase, which gives us another year to, to have more focus on that next year when hopefully we're back to normal. Safe schools increasing slightly. Student activity, there's not a lot going on there, some, but not a lot. So that'll stay pretty stable. Scholarships and then severance. So that is where we're at with our committed and reserved accounts in the general fund. Fund two, this is a, you know, the fund two and fund four is, is going to be a real challenge this year. Our current reality for nutrition services, you know, we were fully staffed September through mid-November. I mean, we needed to be fully staffed in August, even the end of August, we were talking about bringing students back full in person because the county rates were so low. So we were fully staffed, even though we're serving, the meals served are down significantly just because of the hybrid model, and we have fewer distance learning meals. You know, last spring, I think it was really, you know, during the lockdown, it was a little bit different feel. And people use the, the distance learning meals as a chance to get out, almost like a field trip every day for parents to bring their kids. And it's just a different feel this year. And so our meals served are down. We have furloughed several staff and reduced hours of others to appropriately staff during distance learning. And based on our current projection, that fund balance would be close to zero by the end of the year. Again, this is worst case scenario, I feel. We will be reviewing staffing levels carefully when students come back in hybrid model, just to make sure we are staffed appropriately. Luckily, we do have a fund balance to fall back on, but it would take us a while to build that back up again. So not the best case scenario for nutrition services. Fund four is a, again, a difficult situation. School readiness or preschool and ECFE, we still are operating those programs, but we have fewer students and lower class sizes, which caused a decrease in revenue. And it just resulted in a different profit lot, profit loss dynamic. We're still going, which is great. But again, it's, it's, we're going to experience a higher loss than what we thought. We are spending that fund balance down some, but it's, we didn't want to spend it down that much. So we, I am considering doing a transfer from ECFE to school readiness to try to offset some of those school readiness losses. We'll again evaluate that as the year goes on and see how, how things go. Community ed, I did continue a custodial chargeback that we first did in 1920. I feel that's important to, you know, for some of these programs that occupy, they're the only ones to occupy those spaces. We can charge back for custodial costs for those areas. I would like to still continue to do that. But CE program, programming is down considerably, very few in-person classes. We've had the emergency childcare, again, paid for with CRF funds, but we're unsure of funding after 1230. Before and after school care enrollment is down significantly because we're only in, you know, in a hybrid model. We were in a hybrid model. And staffing costs have increased because you have to keep similar age groups together. So even though the ratio hasn't changed, because you want to put first graders with first graders, you know, you don't want to put fifth graders with first graders in these pods, our staffing costs have gone up just so we can keep those age appropriate pods. And we will be reviewing ways to trim costs the second half of the year. The first thing we're doing is, you know, changing our tier one childcare. We are going to be looking at only offering it free if both parents are a tier one worker, except for school district staff. We've already started making those changes. We're also looking at some staffing. I've been working with Janelle, and we have made some decisions that we might be implementing soon. So are looking at ways we can cut those, cut those losses. So you see, the picture is very bleak for nutrition services and community services. Again, this is worst case scenario. I feel like we're going to do better than this. But this is where we stand right now. And I would anticipate, you know, it going much better than that. But this is where we're at right now. So I wanted to give you an honest look at that. And again, might bring another update, March or April, we'll see how things go. Any questions? Oh, next steps, that's right. Usually, this is where I say any questions, but I do have another slide. So depending on the future learning models, you know, we'll continue to look at ways to lower costs. But we can't, you know, put our future staffing needs at risk either. Some of these positions are very hard to fill. And if we, you know, lose a lot of people, then we're going to, you know, risk not being able to provide the services we need to provide in transportation and childcare. So it's, it's, it's a balancing act, really. The three to five year financial planning will start immediately. We'll begin budget planning in January, February. All employee contracts expire 630, and we'll typically would start teaching negotiations in the spring. I see no reason we can't do that. At least start on some of the language items. So yeah, I'll be bringing more information on, you know, the budget planning process after I present the financial projections in, in January. So now, I think, is the questions. Yeah. Any questions? Or comments?
Please, Sandy, I'll, I'll jump in.
Yeah.
So, I mean, first off, thanks for sharing all the information. I mean, that's obviously not good information at all when it comes to the budget and all, I mean, all the funds, honestly. So I do have a couple of questions. So the CRF funds, I mean, do we have a allotted amount for that? Or are we granted more money as we need it? Or how is that working? How does that fund work?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a fixed amount. And for the CRF, specifically, we had about a million dollars. And we split that between fund two, fund four, and fund one. And that is, we have to have it all spent and documented and uploaded to the state by 1230.
Okay. And so do we have any funds left in that, in that amount? Or have we spent it? Or have we been able to spend all of it?
We are, we have been able to spend all of it. And the CARES Act, $130,000, that I will still budget, and that's not budget, that revenue is not budgeted. So I will be, you know, now the next step is to take these grants that I have, this money left and decide how best to spend that after 1230.
Sure. Yeah. And I guess my other comment is, I mean, thank goodness, I mean, the board before me and the administration, you guys have done such a good job ahead of time that we had such a healthy fund balance. Because, I mean, this is going to put us in a situation where we're running against our, you know, our fund balance policy. I'm not too concerned about 2019 or 2021. It's more about now, you know, 21, 22. It's really the part that I'm looking at. In my head, that's where I'm going with everything is going, wow, I mean, if we're this close to our 8% on fund balance, I mean, even if we keep expenses flat with our current revenue, I mean, we're still going to go below our, our fund balance policy. So I mean, that's where, that's where my mind goes. And so I just, and I know you guys are on it, but I guess I just want to, you know, make that comment that, I mean, that's the next thing I'm, I'm thinking about as, as I look through this. So.
Yes. And I, I, yeah, that's about all I think about. So, Tim, did you want to make a comment?
Yeah, I just, yeah, we'll have to wait and see is what happens in spring at the state level. But obviously, almost every district's in the same boat we are now. We've lost a lot of money. The key one is the enrollment. I'm just going to tell you, when you lose that many kids, homeschool, private school, whatever. And then if, if they go by, there's been a lot of talk about them going by the per pupil amount from last year. So what your enrollment was last year, even though it's less than what projected, it's a lot better than being down almost 200 students. So I mean, just do the math there. That would, that would be a big help.
And it makes sense too. I mean, the state's already budgeted that total dollar amount to be spent on school districts. Because right now, what happened is just the students have, the amount of kids in school have decreased. So the funding would actually be a reduction at state level, right, from an expenditure. So it makes sense that they don't spend it, but right? Or am I looking at that wrong?
So the, the, the $650 million surplus, they say they have right now, I think it was 650, they include that included in that is the decreased enrollment.
Sure.
So they are spending that on other things right now.
Okay. Well, hopefully they can get that back to us.
Right, right. I found that out one Friday afternoon. I was at home attending an MSBA webinar, and I was very surprised that they use that in their, to show the budget improving. Any other questions or comments? I would ask for approval of this budget tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve the budget?
Just one, just one question, one last thing. So I know, Sandy, you mentioned something about doing potentially an update of the final budget. What would that really do for us? I mean, it wouldn't really change anything.
It wouldn't, no. I mean, we, we are measured somewhat in our financial statements on how we perform against budget. I mean, it's, it's pretty, and if we're going up for a bond rating, they do ask why there's such large variations. So it's just a, yeah, it's just an official thing.
Okay, got it. All right. I'll make a motion to approve the final budget presentation.
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Okay. Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dean, yes. Motion carries seven zero. Okay. And the next item is the Truth in Taxation presentation.
Okay, Janelle, do you have that as well?
I do.
Thank you so much. Okay, next slide. So, yeah, somebody, if it was, there's a lot of feedback. If somebody could mute their, a couple of their microphones. I'm hearing a lot of feedback for some reason. So a public meeting on the proposed tax levy is required, and it must include the discussion of the taxes payable for the next calendar year, the current year budget, which I just presented, and provide an opportunity for public comment. This just shows you the source of revenue. So this is for our general fund. So only about 11% of our revenue actually comes from the tax levy. 84% is from state sources, by far the majority. So this is a pretty small percentage of our general fund budget. But the next slide shows that as a whole, for all of our funds, it actually increases quite significantly. And the number is hidden there, but it's 22%. And that's because of the debt service and the amount of bonds we have for to pay for our buildings and, and some of our deferred maintenance projects. So as overall, it's about 22% of our revenue. Next slide. So just a very quick tutorial about how local school taxes are determined. There's a couple of different kinds of levies. We've got the voter approved levies. So we have bonds for building projects, and we have approved operating levies. The school board decision ones, they give us special operating, or excuse me, special levy authority to levy for facility leases, reemployment costs, OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits, disabled school care, and some local optional revenue. Excuse me. Then there are some levies set by state formula. Oh, go back. Yep. We've got equity, operating capital, transition, community services, safe schools, LTFM, career tech, community ed, early childhood ECFE. The levies in red are what we call equalized levies. And so basically, what the state does is they calculate the total district revenue based on the formula. And then that is partially paid in state aid and partially paid through the local levy. So the goal is to try to equalize the impact to high, like high property tax districts to low property tax districts. And of course, every year, property taxes, or excuse me, property values go up. They don't always increase the equalization factor. So every year, we lose a little bit in aid unless our property values would drop, which hasn't happened in quite some time. We lose a little bit aid, and so our levies increase. Next slide. So here's the general fund levy. It is increasing $227,000 or 4%. And the next slide will go into some of the details about what's happening in the general fund. So we do, as I said earlier, that we'll have a levy increase and an equalization aid decrease in several of our equalized levies. We have a lower OPEB levy due to lower costs in 1920. We levy based on actual costs. Career tech levy is increasing just due to increase in budget. Every year, you know, salaries and benefits and, and things go up. We have a slight change in the Southwest Metro intermediate safe schools and LTFM levy. We have a slight decrease in safe schools levy. Lease costs are decreasing slightly. We had an increase in estimated reemployment costs. That's kind of a, I mean, I don't know what it's going to be. I think I've talked to you about this in the past. The unemployment, reemployment costs, the bills to the districts are so screwed up from deed that we don't have any idea. screwed up from deed that we don't have any idea what we're going to owe, to be honest with you. I just increased that a little bit to try to have a little bit more. And then we, they are always doing prior year adjustments. In the future, you'll probably see a pretty big prior year adjustment unless they let us hold our ADMs level to last year, just because so many of our levies are based on enrollment and you're always projecting a year and a half out for enrollment. But the swing from the positive prior year adjustments last year to a negative this year. And then we have a small abatement levy this year, it went down slightly. Next slide. Community services is going up 22%, however, that's a much smaller N. So it's not, it's not that big of a dollar increase. It's only, looking here, it's about $76,900. And the difference in the next slide shows you what's happening there. Our population and our birth to five student count increase every year. Abatement levy, small change. And then prior year adjustments were negative for 2020 and positive in 2021. Again, we've got that school age childcare. I've talked to you about this in the past where the needs can vary a lot from year to year depending upon, you know, the students in our before and after childcare program. So that can swing a lot depending on the children's that we're serving. And then debt service fund increasing 3% or about $242,000. And the increases there would be next slide. Again, there's a decrease in equalization aid and an increase in levy. And that's partially offset by a decreased debt schedule for refunded bonds. So those bonds we just refunded, that is reflected in this. If you look back to the preliminary level that you approved in September, it is a, it is a decrease in the levy. We also had a smaller reduction for debt excess in the, in fund seven. And this is just a reminder that the tax credit for Agland for bond referendum increases every year. So in 2021, Agland received a 55% tax credit and it'll increase to, or excuse me, in 2020 at 50, it'll increase to 55% for the 2021 levy. And it will increase five, in 2023, it'll max out at 70%. So our final levy last year was just a little over $14 million. This year it's going to be $14,577,315. And I just delineate there where that, where the increases are. Overall, an increase of 3.89%. This just shows just a graph that's showing the levy for the last five years. Community services, obviously the smallest part. And then we've got the general fund and the debt service. Some, as I mentioned earlier, some are voter approved and some are non-voter approved. So the voter approved levies are 60% and the school board approved levies are 40%. And that again is due to our, you know, relatively high debt service payments as well as our operating levy. The levy by fund, it's 57% is in debt service. General fund is 40% and community service is just very small at 2%. So the estimated tax impact, our net tax capacity did increase 8.3% and the referendum market value increased 6.7%. So a 3.9% levy increase doesn't mean that each property tax levy will increase by 3.9%. So district wide, if property values didn't change, which most did, the levy would actually decrease slightly because of our increased net tax capacity and referendum market value. Next slide shows the average home value in the city of New Prague for 2020 levy was 226. And if the home value didn't change, it would go down slightly. If it increased 2%, it would go up slightly. Like $3 a year. And if it increased seven and a half percent, it would grow up, go up a little, just under $50 a year. And the budget is as presented earlier in the meeting. So the next steps that the public has an opportunity to give feedback. I do not have anybody with me in the boardroom. Janelle, do we have anybody that sent in anything or that is waiting to make a comment?
I'm sorry, I had to end the presentation to look, sorry.
That's okay. So the school board will certify the final levy tonight. Then they calculate the final tax bills and then they start collecting in April and May. And it is revenue for our fiscal year 2122.
There is no, no comment that I can see. Nope.
Okay, good. Thank you. So we're asking that the board certify the levy tonight as presented and I'm, for comments or questions from the board.
Does anybody have any questions? Or comments? Can I get a motion to certify the levy?
I'll make a motion to certify as requested. Denny?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor. Mark?
Hi.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
All right.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Dean, yes. Motion carries seven zero. And now we have
Thank you very much.
Now we have a couple of resolutions. So I'll turn it over to Denny.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to accept a donation from Coburn's.
So moved?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mark.
Whereas the school board may accept a gift valued at $1,000 or more only by adoption of a resolution by two thirds of the members. And whereas Coburn's More Rewards Program wishes to donate $1,114.97 to Raven Stream Elementary. Now therefore be resolved, the New Prague Area School Board of Education shall accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote on this, Tanny?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kim? Kim?
She said yes.
Mike? Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Mark?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Me, Dennis, yes. Item passes. Next, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution to accept a donation from Brian and Lori Volick.
So moved?
Do you have a second? Whereas the school board may accept a gift valued at $1,000 or more only by adoption of a resolution by two thirds of its members. And whereas Brian and Lori Volick wish to donate an adaptive bike to the physical therapy department. Now therefore be it resolved, the New Prague Area School Board of Education shall accept the donation under no conditions. How do you vote on this, Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Kim?
She said yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Yes.
Dennis, item passes.
Okay, and now can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor. Mark?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Dennis?
Yes.
Kim? Tammy?
Yes.
Dean? Yes, motion carries. We are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you. Have a very good night.